Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, August fifteenth County Commission Meeting. If you'd stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here. Just a reminder to silence your cell phones and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Bender. If you need a listening device, Carol could help you with that. With that, we go to item number one, which is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the commission minutes of August eighth.
Approve the minutes with a comment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes, Commissioner Hyburger.
Comment would just be to our lovely assistant here for the wonderful work she did on putting together all those minutes. This last week, we had a very long meeting. There was a lot of names, a lot of addresses, and thank you for the good work you do, Olivia.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Olivia. That was detailed, to say the least, so we appreciate your hard work. We have a motion to approve the commission minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item three, bills to be paid of five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty cents.
Pay the bills.
Second?
Motion and second to pay the bills. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. There are reports to be filed. One is the auditor's account as of July thirty-first, and the other is the County Juvenile Detention Center report, also for July twenty-seventeen. Item five is, item A is to consider a motion to approve the routine personnel action. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to consider routine personnel action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B is a special commission action to consider a request to approve immediate hire for the new tax and license technician position included in the twenty-eighteen provisional budget. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. This is an unusual, is not an unusual request for hiring early the year before for a position that's been approved for the upcoming year. The only thing that's maybe a little bit unusual is the provisional budget has only been passed and not the final. However, there's several reasons we'd recommend that you consider approving the request. First, it was identified as a need during the provisional budget process. And secondly, and maybe most importantly, there's funds to cover the request. Currently, the Treasury's office has about twenty thousand dollars in salary savings, and I'd estimated about a cost of around seventeen thousand dollars to look at filling it right now. It's my understanding that they might hold off a week or two, so the cost for that would be even less. So if you were to approve the request, it would save, it would not result in any additional cost for this year. It could be absorbed with current funds, plus it would save staff time and cost and re-recruiting for the position later on. And then Pam is here if you have any additional questions.
So anyone have any questions or comments for Carrie?
Move to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Sorry, I didn't hear it. Motion to approve? Thank you. We have motion and a second to approve the request. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item C is a special commission action to approve the hire of Donna Kelly as a chief civil deputy state's attorney for the state's attorney's office at forty-one nineteen-twenty bi-weekly, effective eight twenty-one seventeen. Good morning again.
Good morning. You know that for some of the positions with difficult market issues, we've recently recommended approval of starting salaries that are higher above, higher than the original hiring range. This is another case of market issues with the position, but also particularly well-qualified candidate identified in the search process over twenty years of relevant experience, coming with directly relevant experience for the state's attorney's office. So we're recommending approval at the four thousand one one nine twenty bi-weekly.
Thank you, Carrie. Does anyone have any questions for Carrie?
Make a motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
I apologize. Tom is here too, in case you have any additional questions about the county.
Tom, do you have any comments to make?
Chairman, Commissioners, unfortunately have to...
Make the track all the way to the microphone. Sorry.
Chairman, Commissioners, Council, and Staff. Tom Hensley, Chief of the Criminal Division in the Minnehaw County State's Attorney's Office. Good morning to you all. In no way does the request for the salary and the hiring of Ms. Kelly demean anyone in the Civil Section currently. We're blessed and fortunate, as are you, I believe, to have the assistance of very able counsel in that section. And Ms. Kelly, I believe, will be a strong addition there. She does bring some things, as noted, that we believe can facilitate what we already have for the strong staff there in the Civil Section, and that is experience as the first deputy in the state's attorney's office where she was in a county a bit larger than our own. In the past, supervised all staff within that office in, as the first assistant in that position. Also held the position as chief of the Civil Section in that office as well. So has that experience. She had about twice the staff that we do in the Civil Section there that she supervised and had the responsibility of supervising other attorneys. She was a line prosecutor as well for a number of years and brings that experience with her. She was in private practice, involved in civil litigation. She defended nineteen eighty-three actions for the county where she worked as the first assistant and in the Civil Section there. So she brings with her a wealth of experience. We're fortunate, I think, in part because of what you've done to make this a good community in which to live. It attracts a candidate like that to come, to live here with her family and to relocate here. So we would strongly encourage you to approve the hiring at the salary that has been requested at this time. Questions?
Thank you, Tom. Does anyone have any questions for Tom?
For the reasons he eloquently stated, I would make an emotion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Thank you for being here, but more importantly, thank you for your years of service. How many years have you been here?
It's, we quit counting, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request for the chief civil deputy state's attorney's office. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you again. There are no applications for abatement, no notices and requests, no planning and zoning notices, no petition for compromise. Now we're at item for opportunity for public comment. If anyone has a public comment they'd like to make on something that is not on the agenda, please come forward.
I didn't intend of it all, and you should quit when you're ahead, I know. But I just wanted to thank you for supporting hiring that person early, and there were two good reasons. And one was that we're implementing that new accounting system, and we're implementing a new state DMV system, so it just makes it work a lot better, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
You're still ahead, so don't worry about it. Any other comments that anyone would like to make? Do need to identify yourself. Good morning.
Keep this microphone up here. Greetings. My name is David Zalkitis, and you can tell I'm talking about drug prohibition today. This is part two of a three-part mini-series. There's a lot to talk about. I'm campaigning for mayor of Sioux Falls, which maybe people know, but I'm doing that not so much just to be mayor, but to let people know what's going on in the world, why it's happening, and what we can do to try to change it. And drug prohibition is a big part of what's going on in the world, so I'm here to give part two of three parts on the subject. Okay. So let's go to the first slide here. One of these buttons. Where's the magic button? Oh, it crashed. Okay. Yeah? Looks better. There you go. Okay. When you look at social problems, it's good to try to get some measure of their magnitude. So I went to drugfacts.org and looked at deaths in the year two thousand and fourteen, and roughly three million people died in the USA. Heart disease was a big issue. Tobacco was also a big issue, but illegal drugs, remarkably enough, only caused point eight percent of deaths in that year. My powerpoint's not working so well. Hardly any at all.
Sorry about that, David.
It's here.
It's now back here. There we go.
There we go.
We'll start your five minutes all over.
Thank you. So if you look at the causes of deaths in that year, heart disease causes forty times as many deaths as illegal drugs. Huge factor, forty. Tobacco, twenty-three times as many deaths. Legal drugs cause more deaths than illegal drugs. And on this last statistic is very interesting, zero deaths in that year due to cannabis overdose. Zero, a remarkably low number. Now, if you compare the harmful effects of these various chemicals, you'll find that alcohol is more dangerous than cannabis, not something that's in the popular press. There's a study out there that I cited in the UK, nice scientific study, cannabis is less dangerous than alcohol. And if it's less dangerous, I don't know why we have one illegal and the other legal. It's kind of backwards. It'd be better if we could shift from alcohol to cannabis, we'd be safer, and it'd be even better if we could get people to be more, be more at peace in themselves. All right, now I'm trying to look at alcohol and cannabis with regard to teenagers, and which one is worse? And again, as far as I can tell, with the evidence that's available, they're kind of about the same, and maybe cannabis is even a little bit safer. So again, why is the one illegal and the other legal? It really doesn't make a whole lot of sense. If you want to look at drug prohibition, it's good to start back at the beginning. Around nineteen twenty, we had a big influx of Mexican immigration, and they happened to smoke a little bit of weed. Well, in the area, there was some competition with hemp paper and wood pulp paper, and pharmaceuticals didn't like easy weed coming in, stifling the competition. It looks like there's some racism against Mexican immigrants, some corporate greed going on here, stifling competition, and power politics, all in play circa nineteen twenty. Not the kind of thing we want to happen. Here's a demagogue you really need to check out, Harry J. Anslinger. He's very important. He was in control of the Bureau of Narcotics for thirty years, one of the primary figures in the war on cannabis. You got to read this quote. It's just disgusting. "A shortcut to the insane asylum, horrid specters, making a murderer out of somebody who killed, out of the mildest man is..." That's just remarkable demagoguery circa nineteen thirty. And this quote here is really just as nasty. Apparently, according to Harry Anslinger, Negroes are marijuana smokers, and they have satanic music, and if you smoke weed, you're going to try to have sex with black people. That's what he wrote back in nineteen thirty. Pretty disgusting. Racism and demagoguery are pretty prevalent in drug prohibition. John Ehrlichman, Nixon's policy chief, came up with this quote circa nineteen seventy. According to him, the Nixon campaign had two great enemies, the anti-war left and black people. He associated one with marijuana and the other with heroin, criminalized both heavily, and used that to disrupt their communities, arrest their leaders, raid their homes, and lie about drugs. Now, this is the real origin of the war on drugs, and it's not something that people commonly know. Drug prohibition has nothing to do about public safety. It's all about power politics, racism, fear, corruption, but nobody is aware of that. Now we are. The war on drugs is all too similar to the war on crime and the war on terror and multiple wars in Iraq and war in Afghanistan. They're all really designed for the same goal, to keep people afraid and keep somebody else in control. All right, now, I always like to end my little presentations with something to smile about because I talk about bad things and how we can fix them, so for part two, I'm going to wrap up here and say, hey, try to enjoy life even though there's bad things to change.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Anyone else want to make any public comment about anything that is not on the agenda? Okay, we'll go to item ten, which is a public hearing and second reading to adopt the amended twenty-seventeen revised flood plan ordinance and a new flood plan insurance rate maps, effective October fifth, two thousand and seventeen. Morning, Kevin.
Morning. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. As you noted, this is the second hearing for FEMA maps, primarily is what we're adopting. There are some minor changes to the ordinance as well. FEMA has issued three new flood plants, or flood maps, panel maps that affect Minnehaw County, and we'll try to get the map that shows that. These maps have to be adopted and effective before the effective date on the map, which is October fifth, two thousand and seventeen. The floodplain area is going to be increased in small areas in the southwest of Sioux Falls and a little bit extending into the county. That floodplain area is a one percent chance of floodwater inundation, which is also known as the Hundred Year Flood Plain. The area that's affected Minnehaw County, hopefully if we get the map up, we'll see is primarily wetland and agricultural land. The residents of this area, including the residents of the city, that the city has their own adoption, had a public hearing that they were invited to, and that public hearing was on December fifth, two thousand and fifteen. It was a while ago, but that was how FEMA's process works. They have the public hearing for preliminary maps, and there's comment periods and all that, and then they have, then we give them back to adopt them, so. The state's, the state Office of Emergency Management has reviewed this along with FEMA to see that it does comply with all their requirements, and the state's attorney's office also has reviewed this. And so, yes, today we can take action to adopt the two thousand and seventeen revised flood plan ordinance.
Give Jason a few more seconds to see if we can find the map.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask Kevin a question?
Absolutely.
So Kevin, we're required to pass this or to update our FEMA maps, correct?
Yes, the FEMA requires that we have the maps updated to their required maps. Otherwise, we could be sanctioned by FEMA, and we can lose our FEMA benefits.
And additionally, it actually doesn't change where the flood might be.
No, the flood...
They think it's going to go in these areas possibly, but having driven down on Sixty-Ninth Street and other places during a heavy downpour, wow, there's floods everywhere.
It's a better depiction of where the flood would happen or might be, where before the risk was always there, but now it's being depicted as, yes, that it's right there.
And it's affecting people's insurance rates for their properties, right?
It may.
Commissioner Karski?
To answer that question, I think there's one property, one structure, that's in the new floodplain in that watershed. What's the name of that watershed, Nine Mile?
Yep, this would be the Nine Mile Creek watershed.
My question is, who's our, we're required by FEMA to have a administrator for the flood program. Is that you?
That would be Scott.
It's Scott, so if anybody asks questions, they can call Scott, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Now, you can see the areas in blue is where the new floodplain would be located or the new projection of the floodplain, and it's primarily in that low-lying wetland. It doesn't prohibit development. It just, you have to go through different steps to say if you need to fill in a location to put in some development or reroute the floodplain to make it work, so.
Other questions for Kevin?
Move to approve.
This is a public hearing, so we need to ask if anyone is here that is, wants to speak in favor of the change in the revised floodplain ordinance? Anyone here against the floodplain ordinance? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Again.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended twenty-seventeen revised floodplain ordinance, and it's effective October fifth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Kevin. Item eleven is to consider an appeal of a decision by the Minnehaw County Planning Commission to approve a conditional use permit seventeen dash forty-six to exceed twelve-hundred square feet of total accessory building area on properly legally described Lot Two, Holbeck addition, as outlined on the report. David?
Good morning, Commissioner. David Heinold, County Planning Department. This is a public hearing for the appeal of the conditional use permit seventeen dash forty-six. Excuse me for a second. The appeal, so I've attached the information that was included at the last Planning Commission meeting, the history, the notes of the Planning Commission meeting and what was discussed there. There was an appeal letter that was submitted that was also included as well that stated concerns over drainage of the property. Just skipping forward. There we go. One more. Just skipping forward, so the property is outlined in red on this property, as you can see on the map, and the property request is three thousand five hundred and eighty-four square feet. Both parties that spoke in favor and opposition were notified of the meeting on August first. There was just two that were indicated in the minutes. Just going through a few of the slides. The building itself, the proposed building, there are already two existing smaller sheds on the property, as you can see on the south part of this site plan, and just north of that is a proposed forty-by-sixty building that is located between the house that is being constructed currently on the property at the end of the road there. And just some of the properties, really quickly going over a broad overview of the buildings that are in the area, several buildings, including just to the south, as you can see on the map on that Washington Street. There were a few properties approved conditional use permits for larger sizes, and the ranges go from twelve-hundred square feet to four thousand five hundred square feet. Just a quick snapshot of that. This is an overview of the drainage in the area, just so you can see the, kind of the high-level update of how the layout is of the drainage. The majority of the lot would, and I took a couple of pictures of this, just looking, getting different vantage points at the property itself. And maybe we lost it. This is just the building itself, the two sheds. One is currently being constructed. You're looking at the location for the proposed forty-by-sixty, pending approval of the conditional use permit size, and again, the same shot, the house off to the right, currently being worked on. And then, this is looking on Helen Trail, looking north towards two fifty-fifth Street, getting that vantage point, and then looking up the hill on the contour map, so you're looking towards the site. This is that two fifty-fifth Street, looking again up the hill, and this is just the two fifty-fifth Street, looking west, or looking east, and then this is looking back east, or west, excuse me. This is that property looking back southeast towards the subject property, looking from that low area as indicated on that contour map. And just some of the sizes in the area, pictures of buildings and different, along two fifty-fifth Street and Washington Street, and that's all the photos that I have for that. So the Planning Commission unanimously approved this at the July twenty-fifth, July twenty-fourth meeting, and I'll answer any questions that you may have. Action should be taken to uphold, deny, or modify.
Thank you, David. Does anyone have any questions for David? I noticed the applicant is here. Do you have any comments that you'd like to make? You'll need to come to the microphone. Good morning.
Morning. Jim Holbeck. I presently live at two seven three three nine Ridgeway Road in Harrisburg, and be moving out here hopefully in about three weeks. I think David explained everything pretty well. The placement of the building that we put to the, to the other side of our house is going to be something that's basically in the middle of the section. It's a newly constructed building, eye appealing, and we took into account all the things that the county wanted us to do. So I'd reserve any comments until after I hear the concerns from the person who's brought this appeal.
That's fine. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Holbeck at this point? Is there anyone else who would like to speak, who is either in favor or against the project? You'll need to come to the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
Tony Lee. I reside at four seven five six three, two hundred and fifty-fifth Street. So we would be directly north and east of the subject property. The problem that really imposes here is you have ordinances to follow and to uphold, and if you're going to bring up subject properties that, hey, the adjacent area is, has all these exemptions to the rule, well, then why doesn't Helen Trail go to those other properties? It doesn't, right? So we're creating additional watershed in that area. My home has personally flooded twice, okay? And you're creating additional watershed. There's no water retention ponds. There's nothing to slow down the watershed that's going off of here. The county ordinances fail to address the adjacent properties to, when they submit a plan, to protect us, right? We're, you're there, as voted members, your job is to actually represent everybody equally, not just the developers that come up here, but the existing residents. And the ordinances you have are not being followed. I'm going to be told their guidelines, right? But the people before you created those guidelines for a reason. If he wants to put up a third shed, it should conform to the properties adjacent to him. Remove the smaller sheds, put up the forty-by-sixty, right? That would be a good compromise. I am directly adjacent. I applied to add on to my structure and was adamantly told no. So just because it's Mr. Holbeck standing up here, you're going to approve it? He doesn't live there. None of that property is in his name, and yet he's the investor up here. We're the existing residents. It directly reflects the traffic on our road. There's no road maintenance done. It's a half-mile... There's no road maintenance done. It's a half-mile road. And when does it stop? I have 900 square foot outbuilding with an additional gardening shack. Can that not be the precedence, or use another neighbor directly adjacent, right? He's got a 30 by 40. That would be 1,200 square feet. So all of the people before him have followed the rules. Why is there an exemption now? And I really want to bring up the ordinances again. This idea that you can go up here and develop a piece of land without taking into account the watershed to the adjacent land is wrong. For the first time in the 13 years I've lived there, 475th and a half street flooded. It was almost impassable. And he's going to tell you it's because it was during the freeze thaw of the season. I have pictures. I have dates. But I also have a job and a life, and I haven't had time to get those prepared for you. But that doesn't take away from the fact that he's creating more watershed up there. Where are the water retention ponds? If this was Sioux Falls, this would not have happened. The idea that his watershed affecting other people's property would not have happened. The ordinances need to be updated. The guidance that was set before you, in front of you, before your predecessors needs to be followed. This individualism of whoever presents to you, whether it's an attorney, an investor, those guidance rules are there for a reason. Let the people that went before him follow the rules. He should do the same. It is cut and dry. It is clear. His unplanning of the area, right, just like his predecessor before him, Wade Peterson, his unplanning affects the existing residents. I bought this property in 2004. There were zero eligibility's on that land. I paid for an attorney firm to research. There was no adjacent eligibility's. And then in 2007, Wademan Peterson wanted to bring the eligibility's from the floodplain up to the hill. They were not contiguous. The state's attorney got up here and even spoke to you as the commission stating the precedence you were setting was ill-advised and not right. 2008, he convinced a property owner to quit claim deed her property so that they were contiguous. Is that really the precedence you're trying to set? So in 2009, I added a 12-inch culvert, and I put in a berm to try to help direct, to prevent water from flooding my house, on my nickel. In 2015, I flooded again. So obviously, either my berm wasn't big enough, or the 12-inch culvert wasn't big enough. What we have been able to trace it back to is the crops on the field. Every time it got switched from a row crop to an alfalfa, we flooded. Commissioner Barth, I actually have two documents from the USDA showing how switching from row crop to grass or an alfalfa dramatically affects runoff. I was told at the previous board meeting that row crops and cover crops have no effect on runoff. If that was the case, why do we spend hundreds of millions of dollars a year on research with farmers to try to educate them on how to prevent runoff and try to maintain soil conditions? I was lied to. I've been up here before, asking to build a business on adjacent to commercial properties. I've asked to build a shed on my existing property, always being denied because of who I am, because it did fit your county ordinance. And now you're saying yes to Holbeck because of who he is. The ordinances are there to be followed, and you're going to say yes, there are guidelines. And you're going to say yes, we, we make exceptions to the rule. But by doing an exemption here, exception, is you're, you're literally stepping on everybody else that has followed the rules. Everybody. Grow up. Have a little bit of respect for the existing people that live here.
Mr. Lee, none of us were here when this other decision was made. So don't make it personal about the five of us, because that is not professional, and you do know better than that. Please keep it to the topic, not about personalities who are not here.
However.
That's fine.
Just like the previous Congress, or even the federal government, the five of you, or the seven of you, do have a responsibility of your predecessors. So I can appreciate your comments, sir.
I appreciate yours.
But this isn't right.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Lee? Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm wondering why your building was denied on your, on your place, and what were the reasons? And how long ago was that?
It was, I would have asked for that in either 2009 or 2010. And I was told because it didn't follow the ordinance. It was that we already had 900 square feet, and we were just told no.
Can you clarify that, Mr. Lee? Did you apply then, or did you not apply?
I did not apply to the board because the department told me no.
Okay.
So I do have a life. I do have things I need to do in life. Why would you go against the department? I'm sorry. I have more respect for them than that.
Can you identify on the map exactly which property is yours, sir? Or on the map up on the wall?
Yeah, we have a screen on the front. Mr. Lee, we have a screen on this side of the podium, if you'd like to point it.
It is that one. Okay. Okay, the one right on the corner.
Yep, it sure does.
So I'm right there. I am affected by every construction vehicle that comes up through here. There's been two close calls with my children. I brought it up when you guys agreed to move the eligibility's up here. One, Holbeck stopped before my kid was the hood ornament. Two, his son was driving, and my kid stopped in time, and it was inches away. So I appreciate that you stopped in time. But there's been two. All you're doing is adding more. This is not a city.
Thank you, Tony. Any other questions for Mr. Lee? Do you have any other comments, sir?
I did put a homemade speed bump in the road. I understand that was probably against the rules. After I did that homemade speed bump, they started driving on the grass. So I put a stump in on the road to divert them back to the road. The speed bump needs to get created again because it's filled in over time. That is a racetrack right now again. I don't need a kid as a hood ornament.
Any other questions for Mr. Lee? Thank you. Anyone else like to make comments? Mr. Holbeck, your opportunity?
Jim Holbeck. Quite a few accusations made, of which I don't agree with most all of those. The, as far as the property not in my name, it is in my name. And the whole 20 acres that I bought, when I bought those, had six eligibility's with it. The history of what happened and how those eligibility's got there isn't something that I was involved with. The flooding that took place to his house prior to me owning the land wasn't something I was involved with. Putting alfalfa on the land wasn't something I did. I wasn't involved with. We, this is the fourth time I've given this talk. This is past history, of which I don't have any control over. But if you looked at the topo graph, or map of this property, this shed will all drain to the west and out through that drainage ditch that you see going, kind of a diagonal there, going up to the ditch through a vacant lot, of which there's no eligibility assigned to. The drainage of this is not going to be an, an impact issue. So if you can just show where that drainage ditch is, that goes kind of at a diagonal there from where my house is. So if you, so if you just end up looking here.
Mr. Holbeck, would you want to do that maybe over there so everyone can see, please?
So the shed will sit here, and if you see these topo lines, that means that the water is running this way, and it's going to run through this property, which this is a lowland. Nobody's ever built on that. So there's not going to be any water issues with this shed that's being put up. So I don't know what else to do. To say, again, it seems like a lot of water under the bridge. It probably reminds me a little bit about immigration. The last person who gets on Ellis Island thinks the door should shut and nobody else should move in. This property was available. It had eligibility's on it. Tony has said to my face, "I don't want you here. I don't want you building here." That's property that was available to build on. Don't know what else to tell you.
Any other question, Mr. Karski?
David, if you would, I don't know how to read a topo map or topography map, so could you maybe for the benefit of us that don't fully understand how all those lines work and what they mean? Can you kind of, maybe even on this map up here? I mean, Mr. Holbeck said it, that means it all drains that way, but I mean, is there elevation differences on each one of those lines?
So you can kind of see, just the general high-level specifics. You saw in some of the pictures I had, just as an explanation. You have the highest point, actually, this is one of the lowest points. This is, you get to a higher point, this line. And when you start falling down, and just keep stepping down. And then when you get up here, as that picture showed, that was the low area. You're looking up towards the hill. You can barely see all but the tops of the buildings.
One of the other pictures showed a shed sitting on top of a hill. Where's that shed, or that storage building?
Up here.
That's that one down there?
Yeah, it would've been right here.
That's that one right there, okay. The house is there, and this shed is going to be built where? Or this structures?
Right in the middle.
Okay.
This is the cul-de-sac. Oh, actually, yeah, the house is, yeah, excuse me. The house is like right here. The building, right.
Is it going to be behind the one that's already there? I'm still...
Yeah, so, so you've got two sheds existing, being built right now. This would be the 40 by 60 location.
Okay. So current ordinance, if I may continue?
Absolutely.
Allows for, how many square feet of storage?
So the current ordinance, should I go back to the microphone?
David Heinold, Planning Department. So the current ordinance allows, in a subdivision of more than four platted lots, which this is a subdivision, allows up to 1,200 square feet of total accessory building area. If somebody, a landowner, wants to exceed that total, they have to come before the planning committee, or they have to apply for a conditional use permit, and then it's to be heard by the Planning Commission with the requested size.
So he already has 1,200, and he wants to build an additional 2,400? Or what am I?
He's requesting on the property to exceed 1,200 square feet, because there's been no application made. And so the request is for 3,584 square feet.
Total?
Total.
Not, not in addition to what's already there, but?
Of all the buildings that are not attached to the house.
And that ordinance doesn't make any recognized size of the lots or anything like that? If you have more lot, you don't get more space, it means?
No.
If you have a, he has, I don't know how many acres here, I think it was four, give or take. If you have a one-acre lot, you get the same square footage. Four acres, you still get the same square footage?
No, there's no requirement for acreage, total acreage.
Other questions for David?
I would just make the comment that probably seven out of 10 items coming before the Planning Commission are to exceed the storage size. They want to build a bigger building. We've had them as low as like, they, and they want to exceed the 1,200 square feet with 1,290 square feet, and we've had them as big as, I don't know, 12,000 square feet, I think. And let me say that sometimes, I think we just had one by Valley Springs, where they were going to take down a 8,500-square-foot building and build a 11,000-square-foot building. So each, each situation is a little bit different, but this is a, a, a big concern of the Planning Department, where we, or Planning Commission, where we get these applications all the time.
If I could, looking at the Planning Commission's conditional use contingencies or conditions, one of them is that only personal residential storage shall be allowed in the building, and no commercial uses or commercial storage will be allowed. So is that personal to the individual that lives there, or could he rent out storage space in there?
No, they, they can't rent out storage space for commercial purposes.
Okay, so I have a boat, I have a boat, and I want to store it in Mr. Holbeck's property. Can I store my stuff in his property?
So no money can be exchanged for that, but the ordinance allows up to three recreational vehicles to be stored on the property.
Oh, okay.
Questions or comments, Commissioner?
Just to kind of go back to Commissioner Karski's question, do you agree with the applicant that where the building is going to be located, that it's going to drain to the, to the north and the west?
I think being on-site on the property, and I spent time out there during my site visit, and really getting a feel for the land and interviewing, especially for upcoming Planning Commission meetings, and getting an idea of where that drainage is going to go. I think the majority of it is going to go, the majority of the rain will go to the northwest, along that ri, or that, you see that valley, it goes between the, there you go, thank you. Goes to the northwest, to that low area, which is a wetland. And the, in an extreme rainfall event, there probably will be water going all different directions, because you've got it, and it's going to go down the road. I mean, it's going to, it's going to shed everywhere. But with the amount of distance, that's a pretty considerable amount of distance between properties out there, about 100 to 200 feet.
Other questions for David? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment. One of your slides, David, shows a lot of properties in that area that have very large buildings already on them.
Do you want?
No, I just, it was just a comment that one of those slides out there shows the sizes of ones that have been approved in that area.
Do you have a page number by chance?
David, do you want to flip to that? I think it might be back, one or two. It's on one of your slides. That one, it doesn't have a page number, I don't think.
Thank you.
Actually, it's six.
Page six?
Six of 29 on my iPad, so.
Any other comments? Mr. Lee, I'd be happy if you want to make any other comments. You could do that.
I'll say thank you for that, because that's never happened in any of the other meetings. If you pull up GIS, Mr. Holbeck's name isn't on any of the existing properties that are up there. So I, I can't speak for what name they're using to put on those properties, but the idea he'll be up there in three weeks to reside up there, I, I don't know where that comes from. Again, my point is the adjacent property owners have had to follow the ordinance. So should he. He's right on the fact, I didn't ask for him as a neighbor. He asked for me as a neighbor, and he should have to follow the ordinances and the precedence that has been set before him by his adjacent neighbors. This isn't a free-for-all. It's going to bring additional traffic on the road that is already not maintained.
Thank you. Any comments about the maintenance of that road, Scott, that you'd like to make, or David, either one?
That's a private road, and it's maintained by the...
That's a private road, and it's maintained by the people using it as it was indicated on the plat.
Scott, identify yourself.
I'm Anderson Planning Director.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify that, because I wasn't a hundred percent sure that it was private.
That's not true.
You'll have to come to the microphone and tell me why.
The reason that's not true is only Helen Trail is private property.
What we're talking about, that's what we're talking about.
Yep.
This is only considered private. This is actually a public half-mile road that townships refuse to maintain. That was dedicated to the public, that section up there in seventy-two or seventy-five. That is a public, public land.
Is that what you refer to as two fifty-seven and a half?
It's two hun, it's four hundred and seventy-fifth and a half street. It is not Helen Trail, it is four seventy-five and a half.
That township should be taken care of.
Yeah, Tony, have you talked to the township at all?
I have, and they are only required by law to maintain one-mile intervals. I've maintained that road for thirteen years. I've put crushed concrete on it, I have bladed it, I have done snow removal on it. I've done my part.
Commissioner Hybarger?
There's a half-mile road by my place, and the township maintains it. So I'm, I'm just wondering where we need to go to look at that, because they should be ma, I would think, maintaining it. So that might be a question for our attorney to look at. Why, who is responsible? Because I would say if it's, if it's a county township road, and you're putting stumps and stuff in it, that'd be illegal too, but we need to find out, because I know the one by my house is well-maintained, I lived on it for quite a while.
First, I'd like to.
Mr. Chairman, you know, this has come up in the past in many, many subdivisions and stuff throughout the county, and the townships have a lot of latitude there. They can, like in the town of Ellis, they, the township was refusing to do the roads there, and they, the township can charge those people extra money if they choose to and then do that maintenance, but this is an issue that's come up previously. And the townships are, Tony is right, they're not required to do anything except the section lines.
Do you have a comment? Miss State's Attorney?
I don't, but I'd be happy to research that issue for you.
Thank you. Other questions for either party?
Question for planning, if I may?
Absolutely.
On this, we talk about eligibilities, and how many are left? Could this be subdivided anymore, this piece of land, this four acres? Is it at where it is? I mean, could, you know, somebody come in, Mr. Holbeck or whatever? I, I look at that red block, and I look at the homes that are to the north and east, and there's four homes on the same size area that this one's going to have one home with, you know, some storage buildings. So, you know, when I look at total land consumed by it versus a similar piece of property in size that has a whole bunch of structures on it, it, it puzzles me. And I'm wondering, could you do this, like their property to the north and east, and divide that into four different properties? Is there enough eligibilities there, or can you tell me how that works?
There has to be an eligibility available on the property. And the only eligibilities that are there are the ones that were moved, and then the, that, that subdivision you see there on Helen Trail was, went through the preliminary plan process for subdivision. And so the building eligibility has got allotted to each lot, the four lots.
So each one of those lot is one eligibility, is what you're telling me? It can't be divided out anymore?
Correct. But if they had an eligibility, the minimum lot size in the agricultural zoning district is one acre.
Yes, Hybarger?
Maybe just a little clarification of what you said, though, David. There was four building eligibilities for that twenty acres. So if Mr. Holbeck's family in the future wanted to put four houses in an area, they've got one. They've still got three more building eligibilities, and anywhere in that twenty-acre plot, they could put three more homes if they wanted to, because it's all one area.
Again, there's to be the eligibilities there on the property.
There's four eligibilities.
And right now, there's just the two houses on the west side of Helen Trail.
So there are more eligibilities available.
Mr. Holbeck, would you come to the mic and answer that question, please?
It's always been my intent that we keep these lots large, and you see that mine's the smallest at four acres. My son right next to me has six acres to the north. The other two lots are sold with the eligibilities. I will not be putting any more houses on my property, I have no more eligibilities.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Barth?
I just would like to comment on the eligibilities, and Mr. Lee is correct that there was some manipulation done many years ago to get them there. You know, there are thousands of building eligibilities in the floodplain that cannot be built. And so landowners there are sitting on what might be considered an asset. And some years back, I can't remember if I was a candidate for office or just a frequent visitor to commission meetings, or even a commissioner, the owner of the land down towards the river, which is to the left of the map that you see, acquired a property, one of those long, long lots, which are, each has their own house on it, and, and used, he acquired the property, he then had contiguous connection from, from the, the river area to the land that was otherwise landlocked. So then he transferred the eligibilities, and then he sold that long piece back to the original owner. So there's certainly some manipulation that was happening, but this is what happens, and certainly there was nothing in, in the law to prohibit an owner transferring eligibilities even across the highway like that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Is there action on the appeal?
I would make a motion based on where those lines are, the topography map lines are, that the water is going to flow away from Mr. Lee's home. I would make, I would approve the conditional use permit.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I think we probably need a roll call vote.
Barth?
Why am I always first? Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kurski?
Yes.
Hybarger?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, five to zero. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for coming. Hopefully, you'll be able to work this out and be good neighbors for each other. Item number twelve is to consider a motion to authorize the chair and the director of emergency management to sign the state and local agreement between Minnehaha County, the state of South Dakota, to support Minnehaha County Emergency Management Office expenses. Lynn DeYoung.
Commissioners Lynn DeYoung, Emergency Management. This is a yearly grant that we receive for working with the state of South Dakota in the emergency management program. It provides for fifty percent of salary and administrative expenses. The award amount is two twenty-three, two ninety-eight, forty-two, which is more than we typically can use on salary and administrative expenses. So we'll be submitting a list of eligible projects to the state for consideration for reimbursement. Typically, what happens is we actually sign the work plan in September fifteenth timeframe, and then because the finances are based on the federal fiscal year, we wait until the federal government either signs a continuing resolution or passes a budget until we actually get the award amount. So we work all year long before we know how much we've worked for, and that's the case once again in this. So to get our funding for the work all year, the commission is being requested to sign the reimbursement agreement along with the emergency manager. And I'd be happy to ask her any questions.
I'm sorry. Any questions, Lynn, for Lynn? Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second to approve the agreement with the state of South Dakota. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes, thank you.
So Commissioners, in about three or four weeks, you'll see the actual work plan for the next fiscal year coming, and then funding will depend on what the federal government does as far as they're part of it. So I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. Item thirteen is a briefing from the auditor's office to consider the purchase of one hundred express vote machines for a total of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Mr. Litz?
Good morning, Commissioner Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office, Elections Department. And today, I wanted to give a briefing on, on the machine that we've been looking at to help modernize our elections. The past two years, the Secretary of State's office has been involved with certification of a new ESNS product called the Express Vote Machine. Certification process for the machine was conducted for a second time in June this year and attended by myself and Jason Turing from IT. Machines were originally certified in 2014 due to some election problems that they actually had in Missouri. The Secretary of State decertified the machines in South Dakota. But those, those probably issues have been resolved, and we had another recertification this summer for these machines in South Dakota. Point is that we've been looking at these machines for a couple of years now. Minnehaha County Auditor's Office would like to purchase a hundred of these machines for these following three reasons. First one would be to replace the auto marks. Right now, the current ADA-approved machine that we're required to have out in each polling place is called the auto mark, it's from two thousand and two technology. We're starting to have issues with them breaking down. I expend considerable manpower hours every election, setting them up and, at the election, and going out and troubleshooting them. And we've had times where the, we've sent the troubleshooters out, and they've not been able to get them going, and so I have a few backups that we've done that with. I'd like to point out again that federal law does require we either have the auto marks or the express votes, which is a new replacement for the auto mark, at each polling location. The second reason is they'll modernize our early voting process. We'd like to begin using the express vote machines during the early voting, as they'll streamline and speed up the voting process. On election day, each precinct would receive a minimum of one machine. And some of the machine, or some of the precincts that are what I call a hot precinct, they're high turnout, tend to have a larger number of younger, family-oriented, you know, people that are involved with raising families, they like the technology. We want to put a few of them out there to get the, get them used to them. I passed a pamphlet out, as well as a ballot, that the new machine takes, and this is what the new ballot looks like for these machines. And we will have some of these printed up for each precinct, we'll have some printed up for absentee voting downstairs, and we will be offering the regular ballots as well along with this. So if somebody prefers the old style of voting, marking it with a pencil, they can certainly do that as well. The, the big reason that I'd like to get these machines is the, there's new software that's involved with our DS eight fifty and these machines, and they're redoing that as well. But anyway, we have a, I think, a function called the ERM. That's our election reporting manager on election night. And when we got the new eight fifties, they gave us a, well, kind of a converted version of the old software, and it was supposed to work with our ERM, our election reporting manager, but it never has since we've got the election machines just prior to the general election in 2014. And as a result of that, we've had to hand upload our results, and some folks are uncomfortable with that. So the cost for the hundred machines, as Gerald pointed out, was three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. It's a lot of money, I realize that. Elections are just plain expensive, folks. This would complete one of the final pieces in my mind for kind of modernizing elections here in Minnehaha County. Right now, I have four hundred and sixty-five thousand plus dollars in my HAVA account, and that'll leave a balance of about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for future use. I, I will be requesting action from this commission next week if you desire, but if one week is not long enough to look at the, what the information that I provided, we'd be glad to back that up a little bit. However, the state's, Secretary of State's office has requested that sometime around the middle of August, that state, we do the statewide order and order to get our discount on it. And so I've talked to them about that, and they're still good at the twenty-second, and I suspect a week later wouldn't hurt them any either. Seems like the vendor would always take our money. Jason Turing from IT is here. He's been with me on a couple of adventures here, election adventures. Monty was gracious enough to, to let me have him. One of them was we went down and took a tour of ESNS, and this is one of the machines that we previewed. And also this summer, Jason and I went out to Pier for the certification of this machine, the software, some other things. We spent, I think, three days out there, working with ESNS and the Secretary of State, helping certify these machines and running through them. And we, this one here, we tried jamming it up. We tried putting our hand over where the ballot comes out and doing a few other tricks to it, and it's a, it's a pretty nice machine, it's very intuitive. I was able to jump right on it, it's very quick compared to the auto mark, and we're hoping that you'll consider it. Like I say, Jason's here. Jason, would you care to comment anything here, or you want to wait and see if somebody corners you? Okay. So like I say, I, this is just a briefing today, and any questions you might have about this, this process here, we welcome those.
Mr. Barth?
Bob, you talk about the software. Is it secure as far as, we wouldn't have any foreign countries hacking in on this and changing me to winning the next election?
Well, I'm, I'm still waiting for my check from Mr. Trump, it hasn't arrived yet, but I, I don't think so. And this is a standalone machine that will record your ballot, simply. It, it's very quick, and like I say, our.
Does it give you the copy of your ballot then, and then you put it in the box, or?
Yeah, you, you'll take this ballot. What you'll do is you'll get this pre-printed ballot from us, just like the other ones. You'll go up to the machine, you'll insert it in, and your election for that ballot will show up on the screen, and you just punch it in, it will do that. At any time, you can go back and change it, at the end of the screen, you have, all your options are brought up again, and then it will give you this printed paper ballot, just like the bigger ones are, with your results on that ballot. So you can go look at it. And if you didn't, didn't like, or you want to change your mind, you've got three shots at changing it, getting another ballot, and we can mark those as a discarded ballot, so.
Does it have a mode for none of the above?
I don't think it does, unless Secretary of State approves that on the ballot.
Commissioner Kurski?
These machines are the ones that the Secretary of State has brought to you to say these are what? Is that where that's coming from, or can you?
Well, we've been looking at it for a couple of years, and there's a lot of things out there, Dean, from a lot of different vendors. ESNS has been a longtime provider of ours, especially after Jason and I went on the tour down there. We're very confident in their abilities and their integrity and their corporate structure. So out of this wide array of things that are available out there, we've been, we've been looking at this one. It works with the current systems that we do have. I, I think after, like I say, touring them and having a background with ESNS in a partnership, this would be the best fit for Minnehaha County.
And give me an idea of about, you know, what percentage of all voting entities use these? Is it used by twenty percent?
It's pretty widespread in South Dakota. I can tell you that there are two very large election vendor providers in, in the, in the North American continent today. ESNS is one of them. And then the other one, I can't quite recall the name of it, but they're out of Canada, and they're prevalent in the United States today. Out of the election vendors, I would have to tell you, ESNS is probably the biggest one in the United States today.
Thank you.
Other questions? This is a briefing. Do you want it brought back in one week, or the Secretary of State would like some sort of answer by the twenty-second? Is that what you said?
That's what they said, but like I said, you know, our money's probably good anytime, so I'm sure they'll make an exception.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I personally am comfortable with Bob's recommendation here, and, you know, if the group is, I'll make a motion to approve this acquisition.
Bring it back next week, don't we?
Do we have to?
It is a briefing, I would guess.
This is just a briefing, so.
At that time, I'll, I'll also bring a copy of the contract. I've looked it over, and I don't think the chair has to sign it, but, you know, you may want to, I'll get it up to you, and if you think that's appropriate, we can. But there's a sign for the, a line for the auditor and the Secretary of State, and I think I just need a motion in order for you to effect this change.
Okay. We'll bring it back next week and put it on the agenda.
Can I vote absentee on that?
Yes, you can. Well, the absentee ballots that we're going to send will still be the big one. It'll still be the big one, Jeff. But you can vote absentee down in the office with this, yes, or you can have the big ballots, so.
Item fourteen is to consider a bid award to authorize the chair to sign a construction contract with Pesca Construction for the Saultland Heritage Museum Storage Facility. The bids are open July nineteenth. Bill Hoskins, good morning. Bill Hoskins, good morning.
Good morning, Bill Hoskins, Sioux Land Heritage Museums. Um, yes, we published notice to bidders in Ju- early July and opened bids on July nineteenth. There were seven bidders, and Pesca Construction was the low bidder with an amount of three million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Uh, and, uh, we have a contract here, and we're requesting you to authorize the chairman to sign the contract with Pesca Construction for the construction of the Sioux Land Heritage Museum Storage Facility, which will be at forty-three-hundred Northwest Point Avenue in Sioux Falls.
Any questions for Bill? We've been at this for a long time. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve with a comment.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Commissioner Hiberger?
I just wanna say it's gotta be a very happy year for Bill, two thousand seventeen and eighteen. Um, you've been working on this for a very long time, and also the Hall family, which, um, I didn't think we'd, I'd see it while I was here, so it's pretty exciting to finally be moving forward with this, so.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Pesca. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Uh, item fifteen is liaison report. Does anyone have a liaison report? Commissioner Hiberger?
I'm gonna set a record with, uh, most, uh, most reports given in a row, week after week. Um, none next week. Uh, this week is, this last week, I was at South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Board of Directors meeting in Chamberlain, and, um, three resolutions were brought forward by the Pennington County. Only one of them passed, and, and that one's to clarify the park models, how they're defined in, for taxable purposes. We've got tiny homes coming on, and park models are little trailer houses that people can move around. It doesn't really affect Minnehaha County as much as it affects some of our other, um, like Yankton, down the Yankton area, and around the hills and stuff. They have a lot of people who move in, and they put their decks on their sides of their tiny houses, and they live there. But, um, so there's just, we're gonna move forward with asking for, uh, taxation, um, definition on those smaller vehicles. The resolutions that were brought forward by this board that we voted on a couple of weeks ago, we didn't actually meet the deadline for the association. So, I was able to read through the ones that we had talked about with, um, the city of Sioux Falls and some of the other municipalities in Lincoln County, and, um, had a little bit of conversation about some of the things that we had brought forward. They suggested that we, um, pick our top one or two, and then we'll bring them forward at the convention. We'll have to have two-thirds majority to move them off the floor for discussion purposes. Um, and so, I think we'll have a conversation at some point with that. I did call Jim David, um, from the city yesterday and let him know that's where we are at. Um, and just in conversation, the two of us felt like our, our goal was, we did pretty good anyway. We got the cities and the counties together to discuss, um, what we're in, you know, what types of things we wanna take forward, and I think that's the beginning of a good process. And I think working together is very positive, so that's where we're at.
May I?
Thank you.
Is there any similarities between what they already had and the ones that we weren't able to get on? I mean, was?
Between the one in Pennington Counties? No, and, and actually, I guess one other thing I was gonna mention was that, um, we, we wanna look at our policy statements again as an association, and, and, and one of the board members brought up that some of the things that we had brought forward as resolutions may be addressed in our policy statements. And so, it would be an easy fit to just say, well, this is part of our policy station, statement, we wanna sign on with this, with the municipalities, and move forward. So, and some of the ones that we brought forward, definitely, we're geared more towards municipalities, or were more, um, just kind of overarching. Um, and so, I think there's still plenty of common ground that we can work forward on this.
Other liaison reports? Uh, any new business? Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, uh, make a couple of comments in regard to, uh, Mr. Zukaitis's comments earlier today. It's interesting that this week, the Naco newspaper came with a column on, uh, uh, the legalization of marijuana that was discussed at the national convention. And this week's, our governing magazine had an article about a fellow whose new business is on, uh, uh, working with states and communities, uh, looking at legalized marijuana. And you know, we, last year, we got blindsided by Marcy's Law passing with zero preparation on our part. And I think that, uh, you know, whether it comes to who's gonna get the tax money, or what kind of planning and zoning we would need, uh, you know, should it be in an adult entertainment area? Uh, whatever, I don't think we should have our head in the sand about this, because, uh, I think it well may, uh, come to pass. And I think we should be, uh, we, we don't wanna get blindsided like we were with Marcy's Law.
Uh, Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office, uh, to piggyback on what Jeff's saying. This year at convention, I've noticed that we're gonna have a speaker on the marijuana situation. He's a sheriff from a small, uh, county in Pueblo County, Colorado. So, that might be interesting. If you're out there, you might wanna drop in on that conversation, so.
Thank you. Other comments? Any new business, nor other new business?
Since you commented on David's comments, I'll make a comment too, and that was just, you know, he listed the deaths from illegal drugs, and, um, I know they were two thousand and fourteen, but they, they are significantly starting to rise because of opioids in the United States, and that is a huge issue. Um, they weren't reflected in his presentation, but I think people need to be aware. And maybe marijuana isn't directly linked with death, but it is directly linked with a lot of social issues, so.
Mr. Chairman, ninety-one people, they say, will die today from opioids. Ninety-one people today.
Wow. Other new business? Any old business with that?
Make a motion to adjourn into executive session for contracts and personnel.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
A motion and a second to go into exec session for contracts and personnel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.